Monday, April 17th, here in the chambers. So if everyone could take a seat and we can get started. I'd like to let you know that hopefully we will not have a disaster this evening. I don't know if you all realize this, but Ward 1 was hit pretty hard on Sunday night with an F-1 tornado. And our crews have been out there working diligently and with the street and all the departments to get everything cleaned up as quickly as possible. But I think we lost the biggest tree in Belleville that I have ever seen. I heard it was 400 years old by St. Teresa's. So we were just fortunate it didn't fall on somebody's house because it could have been really, really bad. And then, of course, if we would have a fire, we would go right outside the exit door. Tornado to the basement, which is over by the sewer department, the billing department. So I'd like to remind you that the meetings are being videotaped, so it's really important that we speak as loud as we can into the microphones so people can understand what we are saying. Okay, let's start with roll call of the aldermen. Jenny?
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Whitaker.
Here.
Alderwoman Duco.
Here.
Alderwoman Eris.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Ferguson.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderman Dendelman.
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderwoman Steele.
Here.
Alderman Rothweiler.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Weigant.
Here.
Alderwoman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderwoman Ostoff. Ostoff, Rothweiler, and Eris are excused. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Let's have a roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Beerman. City Attorney Horner.
Present.
Police Chief Iskant.
Here.
Fire Chief Stinson.
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitre.
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole.
Here.
Director of Wastewater Randy Smith.
Here.
Director of Library Lee Spearman.
Here.
Director of IT Eric Walls.
Here.
City Engineer Sal Elcott.
Here.
Director of Health Housing Building Scott Tyler.
Present.
Director of Economic Development Planning and Zoning Cliff Cross.
Present.
Director of Human Resources Bill Clay.
Present.
Director of Communications PR Kathy Kaiser.
Present.
City Treasurer is excused.
Okay, thank you. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll start out tonight with a proclamation in recognition.
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just jumping to the bottom of that agenda. I hope that doesn't mean anything. Okay. Okay, so no public hearing this evening. And public participation, remember, this is two to three minutes per person. So who would like to join in public participation? Is there anyone here? Okay, hearing none. Now I will go on with the presentation in recognition and appointments. Okay, we have a proclamation this evening in recognition of Esophageal Cancer Awareness Month. I think many of the people that we work with have even had this in their family and are battling with their friends and families because of esophageal cancer. So I'm glad that we are doing this tonight as an awareness to make people more aware of the symptoms and medical things that are available to them. So whereas esophageal cancer is among the deadliest forms of cancer, with fewer than one in five patients surviving five years, and whereas esophageal cancer has low survival rates due at least in part to the fact it is usually discovered in an advanced stage when treatment outcomes are poor, and whereas esophageal cancer in the United States is most often associated with persistent heartburn or reflux disease, yet many who are at risk are unaware of the potential danger GERD can present when occurs over several months or years, and whereas esophageal cancer can be a silent killer with patients often unaware that the cough, hoarse voice, sore throat, or chest pain they suffer can be signs of GERD and are reasons to seek further consultation from their health care professionals to rule out esophageal cancer, and whereas esophageal cancer can be prevented through early detection of its precursor Barrett's Esophagitis, which can be treated with new healing outpatient techniques, and whereas the Esophageal Cancer Action Network, ECAN, is working to improve public awareness of the link between heartburn and cancer and supports progress in early detection and treatment of esophageal cancer, and whereas esophageal cancer awareness along with improvements in prevention, early detection, and treatment strategies will enhance the health and the well-being of all Americans. Now therefore, I, Patty Gregory, Mayor of the City of Belleville, Illinois, do hereby proclaim April 2023 Esophageal Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Belleville. In witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Belleville to be affixed this 17th day of April in the year 2023. Thank you very much. And now we have some recognitions to give. If Mr. Hazel would come forward, I'll meet you down here.
This is presented to Joseph Joe Hazel, because I'm used to calling you Joe. And he has been an alderman here for eight years, and it's with grateful appreciation that we thank you for your eight years of dedicated service to the City of Belleville as serving as Ward 1 Alderman from 2015 to 2023. Thank you so much, Joe.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And we'll be missing you on Monday nights.
Well, I come in and visit you every time of the time.
Keep me alive.
I would like to say though, it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve as alderman for the constituents of Ward 1 and for the citizens of Belleville, the businesses, the communities and clubs, and serving with this council, everybody here, and other council members who are gone, and serving with you and the other elected city officials. I've had a great time. It's been an honor and thank you.
Well, thank you, Agent Joe. This is.
Okay, I now believe that Chief Stinson will be coming forward. And Fire Chief Stinson will recognize and present life-saving medals to, would you like to, we'll let you introduce as you get up here. Let's come up here so we can get some great pictures.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time, ma'am, alderman. Thank you. This is the second time that I get to come this month, and this is probably the fun part of being the fire chief, is recognizing the outstanding heroic acts of our team members. So to give some context, I'm going to read off kind of what happened that night, and then I'll get into the medal portion. The Belleville Fire Department responded to a structure fire at 2355 November 11, 2022. Engine 1211 was the first to arrive on scene and was met with heavy smoke billowing from the eaves and the front alpha side of the structure. At this point, the fire consumed the back half of the residence and was extending to the bravo side window. Captain Unorsat, Engine 1211's captain, was advised that there was a person trapped in the bedroom on the first floor. 1249 then was directed to vent, enter, and search the first floor bedroom where the victim was believed to be trapped. 1211 was directed to force entry through the locked front door and begin extinguishing the fire. Acting Captain Ichus of 1249 and Captain Garland of 1229 removed the window of the first floor bedroom, and Acting Captain Ichus entered the room and began to rapidly search. Under zero visibility, extreme conditions, Acting Captain Ichus found the unconscious canine and handed it outside to Captain Garland. 1211 was attacking the fire, but the conditions continued to diminish. The situation was dire, and time was of the essence as heavy black smoke continued to impede Acting Captain Ichus' vision. Yet with tenacity and grit, he forced upon, and moments later, Captain Ichus quickly alerted Captain Garland and firefighters Swent that he found an unconscious victim. Without hesitation, Captain Garland and firefighters Swent entered the heavy smoke-filled room and made their way to Acting Captain Ichus and began assisting with exorcation. They quickly removed the victim out of the toxic environment and handed the victim over to firefighter Rika and brothers from our local police department. The victim was turned over to emergency medical service and transported to Mercy Hospital in St. Louis. Miraculously, despite heavy sit in airway, heavy levels of carbon dioxide, and with some minor burns, she was treated and has since made a full recovery. Attention to orders. Captain Joseph Garland, your life-saving medal is being awarded to you for the heroic actions in this incident. You demonstrated selflessness, poiseur under life-threatening conditions. You placed yourself at risk to save another. Your actions and valiant service reflect great credit upon yourself and are in keeping with the highest traditions of the fire service. Engineer John Ichus, the life-saving medal is being awarded to you for the heroic actions in this incident. You took precise actions, made impeccable decisions, and illustrated selfless acts, placing your own life at risk, which resulted in saving another. Your actions and valiant service reflect great credit upon yourself and keeping with the highest traditions of the fire service. Firefighter Swent, your life-saving medal is being awarded to you for heroic actions in this incident. Your heroic actions and selflessness under hazardous conditions placed your own life at risk to save another. Your actions and valiant service reflect great credit upon yourself and keeping with the highest traditions of the fire service. And before we go, I'd like to say that it's difficult to point out a few in a huge incident like this because it's not just one person, a couple people, it's an entire company, entire battalion. Captain Unorsat, your leadership was instrumental in this operation. You directed the initial actions of the operation that directly resulted in locating and saving the victim to the life of this fire. Thank you. 1211 Company Engineer Lofton, firefighter Mellon. 2029 Captain Garland, Engineer Higgins, and firefighter Rika. 1231 Company Captain Kriegel, Engineer Meyer, and firefighter Holton. Everyone played a significant role in this. Doesn't matter if it's small or big, everyone contributed to the success of this rescue. So with that, thank you everyone for your time. Firefighters, congratulations.
Belleville should be so proud because our public safety departments cannot be beat. The police and fire department do a great job. And let's give everybody a round of applause again. Okay, at this time, I need a motion to approve the department head and staff appointments for the fiscal year 2023-2024. Okay, thank you so much. Any discussion? Okay, hearing done. Let's call for a roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dendelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And now I need a motion to approve Rob Rolrigg to fill the vacancy on the electrical commission left by Ryan Alexander and to serve the remaining of a four-year term expiring August 2023, serving in the capacity of a representative of an electrical utility company.
Do you guys care if the mayor reads the next one also?
Please.
The other appointment?
Okay. I also, and also Josh Hader to fill the vacancy on the electrical commission left by Dave Branton and to serve the remaining of a four-year term expiring August 2023, serving in the capacity of a journeyman master electrician.
Ferguson.
Schaefer.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dendelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, I need a motion to approve the city council and executive session meeting minutes of April 3, 2023.
Elmore.
Schaefer.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, under claims, payroll, and dispersments. I need a motion to approve claims and dispersments in the amount of $8,867,733.83 and payroll in the amount of $944,915.88. Do I hear?
Anthony.
Okay. In a second.
Ferguson.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dendelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, hearing none, roll call.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dendelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. And I'd like to take note that this will be the 24th fireman. The next two will make 24 firemen, I mean, excuse me, police officers, that we have hired in the last two years. So I think our department is doing something really right. So we're very grateful that people are interested in the Belleville Fire Department. Okay, communications. Ms. Jenny?
Reading them together, or do I need, should I pull out Pride Fest for discussion?
Group.
Group? Okay.
12A, Toco Family Festival, 6/24/2023. Request from Tapestry of Community Offerings to host Toco Family Festival Saturday, June 24, 2023, 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Street closures, West Main Street between 8th and 10th Street, and use of city parking lot at 10th and Main, 1:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Additional city services, no parking signage, trash toters, picnic tables, and public works personnel. 12B, Old Town Market, 4/29/2023 through 11/4/2023. Request from Lear's Vegetable Farm to host the Old Town Market every Saturday, April 29th through November 4th, 2023, 7:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Use enclosure of city parking lot at northeast corner of East Washington and South Charles, 6:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Additional city services, barricades, use of garage and banner across North Illinois Street as available. 12C, Downtown Trick or Treat, 10/27/2023. Request from the City of Belleville to host Downtown Trick or Treat Friday, October 27, 2023, 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Street closure request, 3:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. East Main Street from 159 East Side to Charles Street West Side, first block of North-South Hyde, North-South Jackson, North-South Church, two alley and parking lot, use of Patterborne Square. Additional city services, barricades, no parking, trash toters, picnic tables, electric and personnel. 12D, Veterans Day Ceremony, 11/11/2023. Request from City of Belleville to host Veterans Day Ceremony Saturday, November 11, 2023, 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Street closure, Public Square, first block of East Main, West Main, North Illinois and South Illinois, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Additional services, barricades, trash toters, no parking, electricity and personnel. In the event of inclement weather, ceremony will be held in the council chambers. 12E, Cinco de Mayo, 5/5/2023. Request from Mi Casa Mexican Restaurant to host Cinco de Mayo Friday, May 5, 2023, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. In parking lot, no city services requested. 12F, Blessed Believers Community Block Party, 6/10/2023. Request from Blessed Believers to host a community block party Saturday, June 10, 2023, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Street closure request, East Lincoln Street between Charles and Church, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. No additional city services. 12G, Pride Fest, 9:30/2023. Request from Metro East Pride to host Pride Fest Saturday, September 30, 2023, 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Street closure request Friday, September 29, 5:00 p.m. to 11:59 p.m. Saturday, September 30. East Main Street from 159 East Side to Charles Street West Side, one block North-South Hyde, Jackson and Church, the parking lots and alley, northeast, southeast quadrants and Patterborne Square. Additional city services, toters, electric, police, and public works personnel, no parking signage, pride flags installed, week of pride fest and month of pride.
Okay. Motion?
Schaefer will make a motion.
Okay, second?
Sullivan.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call.
We could do all in favor.
Oh, all in favor?
Yep.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. This evening, we have no petitions, so we will go on to resolutions. And I need a motion to read by title only, Resolutions 3476 and 3477.
Dendelman.
Schaefer.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Jenny, would you like to start with resolution?
I'm assuming I can read them together?
Yeah.
14A.
I'm sorry, on the ordinances, I'd like to.
I'm on resolutions. Hold, give me a second. We'll be right to you.
Okay.
All right. 14A, Resolution 3476, a resolution amending the annual budget of the City of Belleville, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May 2022 and ending on the 30th day of April 2023, line item transfer. 14B, Resolution 3477, a resolution amending the annual budget of the City of Belleville, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May 2022 and ending on the 30th day of April 2023, supplemental amendments.
Okay. So we have the motion to, I need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion.
Randall, second.
Okay. So any discussion? Roll call.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dendelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Under ordinances, I need a motion to read by title only, ordinances 9145, 9146, and 9147.
Whitaker, so moved.
Okay, Rafi, second.
I'd like to go ahead and hold out on ordinance 9146. Do that separately.
Okay.
15B.
Okay. And you do know that ordinance is for denial?
I'm sorry?
That is an ordinance, let's finish this motion so we can read.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. So we will be reading these by ordinance with.
This is by title only.
By title only.
Sorry, I have a motion and a second.
Okay, any discussion on these? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of ordinance 9145 and 9147? Jenny, you want to read it?
Wait, don't we have to do a vote?
A vote, say, all in favor.
Voice. Okay, title only, roll call.
Nope, just all in favor.
All in favor.
Aye.
So just for your record, I can pull that one out, but just so you know that this ordinance is, it was denied at the last meeting, and the zoning ordinance is to deny. Okay, that's what I, thank you.
So do you still want it moved down?
Yep. Okay. 15A, Ordinance 9145, 2023, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordnances for the City of Belleville and declaring an emergency. 15B, Ordinance 9146, 2023, a zoning ordinance in regards to case 01, January 23, Ivan Malpica. 15C, Ordinance 9147, 2023, an ordinance establishing the annual budget of the City of Belleville, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May, AD 2023, and ending on the 30th day of April, AD 2024.
Whitaker, so moved.
Randall, second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dendelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.[1630.37]
15B, ordinance 9146, 2023, a zoning ordinance in regards to case 01, January 23, Ivan Malpica. 15C, ordinance 9147, 2023, an ordinance establishing the annual budget of the City of Belleville, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May, AD 2023, and ending on the 30th day of April, AD 2024.
Whitaker, so moved. Randall, second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Hazel.